All right. Call to order, the February 1st, 2022, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information on the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance and members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on the television by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to geneenright@j e n r i g h t@northandoverma.gov. Question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. All right, so as do I. Attendance?
Peter Boynton?
I believe I saw Peter and that he was attending remotely, but let's, we'll come back, we'll come back.
We're taking attendance. Peter Boynton?
Yes, I am having a hard time hearing you, Aton and Gene.
Same with me. I did not hear you call attendance.
Okay.
Yeah, I can hear the people online very, very clearly, but I'm not getting very good audio from your microphones in the room.
Okay, is this better?
The last part was a little bit better. What about my audio? Can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you fine. Okay, is that better, Peter?
That was much better.
Okay, very good. So, we're taking attendance. Peter Boynton?
Here.
Kelly Cormier?
Here.
Alyssa Koenig?
Here.
John Simons?
Here.
Aton Goldberg?
I'm here, and just to, just to be clear, John, myself, and Alyssa are present here at Town Hall. There are a good amount of people here. Most, I think, are from Trinity Aimco, but we'll have, we'll go through who's here for later on for any hearings or any discussion items. And Kelly and Peter are attending remotely. All right, thank you to everybody. So why don't we get started with Master Plan Implementation Committee Q4 Report and Framework Evaluation Downtown Improvement Master Plan. All right. So we appreciate you guys being here. I will say, though, we do have a pretty, we have a lot on our agenda, so feel free to be brief.
That we will. So, for those who don't know us, I'm Jonathan Strauss, Chairman. Meredith Barnes Cook, Vice Chair.
I'm sorry, we can't hear at all.
Pull the microphone closer.
Is that better, Kelly?
Much better, thank you.
All right, all right. So, introductions. Again, I'm Jonathan Strauss, Chairman of Master Plan Implementation Committee. Meredith Barnes Cook, Vice Chair of our committee. So, members of the planning board, this is the Town North Andover Master Plan Implementation Committee's fifth quarterly progress report on town-related activities and the continued implementation of strategies and recommendations as proposed in the town's 2018 master plan. The primary activities of the committee during this quarter were to evaluate major projects before the town for their relationship to the master plan. Specifically, we've reviewed the following, the doubt, and the big-ticket item that we did was the downtown improvements master plan. And then we used the framework that we've previously developed and refined since we've started to review the project with respect to how it matched up with the stated element areas and specific strategies in the master plan. Moving forward, our, we've outlined our objectives for the next quarter to be, to sustain discussions and outreach with groups, organizations, and town bodies responsible for implementing the selected strategies. Continue to identify strategies which may be well already underway or completed through, along with active or proposed projects, initiatives, and government, governance. We also have it on our agenda to continue to monitor the proposed Royal Crest development as warranted. And the big one that we're, we're doing is, we're actively working on a new webpage available to the public that will detail progress on all the strategies contained within the master plan, including those currently in progress and under review. So, that's, that's, that's long and short of it. Happy to answer any questions you might have about what we do.
Is there anything that you guys are finding particularly helpful, or anything that you're having difficulty with that you think, any challenges that you didn't expect?
Wouldn't say challenges. The, the biggest thing for us is trying to stay on top of projects as they come about, projects, initiatives, anything, anything that theoretically comes under the purview of the master plan, and we feel that might need some further evaluation, you know, does it dovetail into what we, what the master plan has outlined for goals and whatnot? And it's just keeping current with, with, with what's happening in town. It, obviously, it helps that we have conduits between the select board and this body with members of our committee, so, but on top of that, it's just, it's just trying to find the, yeah, having information come to us or seeking it out.
And I, and I might say, the only other point is just always us reminding ourselves that our role is to create understanding. We're not making recommendations or providing, we're really just trying to make sure that we are creating continuous understanding for the town of how major initiatives are aligning with the master plan that they set forth for us.
I think it's important to, to note that any analysis that we, we do, we try to keep as objective as possible. Does it, does it not meet objectives in the, in the master plan now? We don't, we don't, we purposely try to avoid coming up with an opinion of sorts, just to keep as neutral as possible when evaluating items.
Okay. Anyone else have questions or comments?
Just a question. You mentioned, I think, at the beginning that you focused on the downtown master plan. Can you talk a little bit about that and what you've observed and perhaps concluded?
I printed out a copy, so that, in the, in the, in the packet you were provided, I believe there was a link to our, our rubric that we, we use to evaluate it. And basically, what we did was, within the 130 or so elements and strategies within the master plan, we looked at it, truncated it down to any of those that are applicable to the project itself, and then we said, all right, went, read through the entire proposed master plan for the downtown improvements and said, is this, if, is this what they're doing? Does it line up with, so as you see behind you there, yeah. Was, we said, is it a positive? Does it, if it, if it aligns with the goals, it's positive. If it does not line up with it, it's negative. And if it has no bearing, then we just called it neutral. And, and that's, that's all we, we, we kind of did, just to, to line up and say, all in all, is this a project that, that is gonna meet up with what the master plan wants in the future of the town? And as you can see, I think the vast majority of, we've, we've found the, the goals to be positive. So, some of them, you know, it, there's, there's a timetable with some of them. I know, like, the undergrounding utilities was, was one of the items, you know, and we said, overall, yes, if you have the funding, then yes, it, it potentially is a positive. So. That's, that's kind of how we go about things on that.
Okay, so one of the things, actually, why don't we just kind of, one of the other things that we have on our agenda tonight is a committee appointment. So Kelly's been on as our planning board representative, really since the, since the outset. So Kelly, how long's that been now?
I think it's been about a year and a half. John and, John took over the reins a few months ago, so about a year and a half.
And so how long, but, okay. So Kelly's been our representative, so I think it's time probably for us to rotate through that and then appoint another representative. So Kelly, can you tell us a little bit about what, kind of what your specific role, how do you approach it from as a planning board member on the implementation committee? And then I'll see if anybody wants particularly to take that role, and if not, then we can talk about how we'll fill it.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, the committee itself meets once a month, and we, as the, the planning board representative, I'm there as any other member of the master plan committee. I do make sure, as John had mentioned, kind of being one of the conduits of information, so bringing what I've heard during these planning board meetings to the group, if there's anything in particular that I want to bring up, or just kind of bringing that general knowledge to the group for discussion. But other than that, working like any of the other committee members on representing, representing different areas of the master plan and helping to have conversations and decide kind of ways forward, you know, working, you know, under John's chairmanship.
And I think that's really important, too, is because not everyone can watch or attend all the planning board meetings, and there's a lot of
Yeah.
things going on at the same time, so it's helpful to have that person from here say, oh yeah, actually, we just talked about the watershed, or we just talked about, hey, we might, there may be a rezoning here or here, and how can we coordinate those things or keep track of those things, as well as what else is going on? So I think that really is important. So, okay, that being said, is there anyone who has a burning desire to be part of the master plan implementation committee, or no time at all and can't do it? What do, what do people, what do we think? John, recently retired, what do you think?
Oh, maybe start working again.
You may start working again?
Maybe soon, yeah.
Gotcha. Um, is there anything that, anybody has a particular interest in? No? Okay. All right. Well, then I will, do you guys have a set meeting date, or is it just something every month you pick something?
We try to keep it towards the beginning, around the first or second Monday of the month. Time commitments, maybe an hour, hour and a half at most, depends on if there's a select board meeting to follow, then we're, then we have a time limit, so, you know, it, the, the time commitment is not great. You know, there's, there's emails that, you know, correspondence that we have follow-up, but the, the vast majority of our conversation is within that meeting itself.
All right. So I'll, no other volunteers, I'll appoint myself to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. If nobody else wants to do it, I'll do it for now, and then take somebody else next year. So why don't we get a motion? Could we get a motion to appoint me to the Master Plan Implementation Committee?
So will.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Second. Vote, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Hi.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, all right, all right. So I'll join you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Aton.
All right, we'll go from there. Thank you for your report, and continued good work.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Why don't we do, why don't we do, why don't we do everything else before we jump into Royal Crest? Just to get everything else out of the way.
Inclusionary zoning?
Yeah. What do we need to do for inclusionary zoning?
Okay, so we have Christopher G. of funding remotely. He is the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
As I indicated at the last meeting, I presented the bylaw to the trust, Chris, as he had a kind of share their sentiment and offer any input that he may have.
Great. We'd love to hear the thoughts of the housing trust.
Sure. Thank you very much, Gene. Good evening, members of the planning board, and sincere apologies for not being able to attend in person. I do very much appreciate the time to speak on the, the proposed bylaw. As Gene stated, my name is Chris G. I've been a resident of North Andover for about seven years. I'm an attorney by day. I've spent the last eight years of my career in the affordable housing field. I'm also the Chair of the Town's Affordable Housing Trust, in which I serve alongside six other resident volunteers who are probably just as committed as I am, if not more, to affordable housing. I'm coming today to voice the trust's unanimous support of the bylaw. As you may know, the trust functions to provide for the preservation, creation, and support of affordable housing in our town. And to that end, the trust has funded various programs, including long-term, short-term rental assistance, down payment assistance, home rehab assistance. We've even provided funds to Red and Rose Housing Lawrence, which has been a tremendous partner for us, by the way, for the purchase of homes that will later be sold to income-eligible home buyers at an affordable price, and probably many other programs that have received, preceded my involvement with the trust. As, as you know, the proposed bylaw provides for payment and lieu fees to be paid to the Affordable Housing Trust, which will likely impact us in a very significant way, because with more potential funding from the bylaw, we'd be able to continue and expand on our current programs and even create new ones that we haven't yet contemplated. Certainly understand that there might be further refinement to the bylaw as proposed. One area that at least myself and one other member of the trust believe can be further refined is the calculation of the payment and lieu itself, perhaps the one that defines a pre-established fee structure. With all that said, I do want to express gratitude to Gene Enright, Town Council, Suzanne Neigan, and everyone else who's been involved for the dedication to drafting and pushing forward this really important bylaw. It's certainly an important step for our town, one personally, which I'm very excited to see the possibility of residents adopting at town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I guess just a, a quick question, Christopher. So you mentioned that you endorsed, you like, like the bylaw. Is there anything in there that you would recommend that we change or that we missed? Or is it, is it a great fit? I'm just wondering if there's anything else we should be doing.
Sure, no, I, I think it's drafted. It's, it's very comprehensive, well thought out. You know, again, I think the payment of lieu calculation itself, it, we may benefit from being, you know, having something that's pre-established, a calculation that developers, the planning board, everyone would be able to see and know, okay, that's what the costs are gonna be, which may be easier on the developer in terms of decision points. But, you know, besides that, I, you know, again, I think it's been well, well thought out and comprehensive.
Thank you.
So since the meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust, and I received that comment from one of the members, I've shared with Christopher some other calculations that we investigated. I opted to go with the one that's in the bylaw. However, I committed to Chris, we'll, we'll have a follow-up conversation, review those, and see if, at the next meeting, we can present some alternatives, and the board can, can talk about it and decide what they think is appropriate.
So right now, we don't have an actual number, that you're talking about for the how much?
Payment and lieu. Yep.
We don't have a set number, right?
It's, it's very broad. It's, we'll look at retail sales and costs at the time of development and come to, to the agreement at that time.
So could we do something that's maybe like a hybrid? Because I don't want to have something necessarily in the bylaw that's then, you know, five years from now, isn't really representative of the, of the market, and then we're kind of in trouble. But I do see the point of, if you're a developer coming in and you're weighing, okay, what's the, am I gonna do a payment and lieu, or am I gonna build? You kind of want to have some sense of what it's gonna be in advance. So I wonder if we could do a hybrid of where we put in an initial one, like based on today's market, and say that this is good for three years, and in three years will be revisited by the, you know, planning board, and the planning board, or, you know, the special permit granting authority can make changes, without having to go back to town meeting, but can make changes in that calculation, and we'll review it every three years, five years, two years, whatever is an appropriate standard. But maybe have something in there just to start, and then have it so it's automatically reviewed after a period of time and can be adjusted.
Yep. So we'll take that into consideration. It could be as simple as, the market unit is worth this, the affordable unit was worth this, and the payment and lieu is the difference of the two.
Yeah.
It could be that simple. So we'll present some alternatives
Okay.
at the next meeting, and I, I do want to talk it through with Christopher and his colleague, because he has some experience with this.
I mean, I'd like it to be as flexible as we can while still giving certainty to developers, and yeah, if anyone, if anyone who's watching has any opinions on that, that would, you know, even from the development side, that's, that'd be helpful. So, okay, awesome. Anybody else have any questions or comments regarding inclusionary zoning? All right, so we'll just keep moving forward with this, Gene. I think it'll be in good shape come town meeting time.
Yep, so just a reminder, the public hearing for zoning amendments opens at your next meeting.
Okay.
So February 15th, we'll open the hearing on this bylaw.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Watershed education, watershed postcard, watershed street crossings, DCR pool guidance.
Okay. So at the last meeting, because the water demand evaluation study was presented, you had had some questions related to just education in general.
Uh huh.
And you asked, I think, John, you had asked for some sourcing of information related to swimming pool maintenance, and DCR put out this guidance associated with swimming pools in the Wachusett Reservoir, but we could easily adopt this. So essentially, it's guidelines for people who own pools in a watershed, and it's just a brochure that they put out for best practices, pollution control practices and whatnot. And so we could easily adopt this, do an article on it, do a mailing on it.
When, when you say adopt it, what do you?
We could, we could.
Could we amend the, well, could this, are you talking about like, for people going forward who already have pools, or when we give a new, you know, a special permit in the watershed, this, you know, we often say, use best practices, we could actually adopt this and say, this is what you have to do?
Yeah.
Or can we say to people who already have pools, you need to do this? I'm not sure if we can, if they already have.
Yeah, I think it's educational for people who already have pools,
Right.
but going forward, we can certainly incorporate this in the decision. For the most part, we do.
Right.
Our O and M plan is consistent with this.
Can we put it in Plan Board Rules and Regulations?
I think so, but.
I mean, it's a little bit off, because it's usually about, you know, the, the width of the roadway and
Yeah.
whether you have granite curves and stuff like that.
Right.
But, you know, maybe it is something, I mean, I'm, I'm, just a thought.
Yep, I, we can think about that.
And then the advantages, it's an essential place anybody can look at, so they know what the pros are.
Yep. I think it's applicable whether you're in the watershed or not, to be, to be honest.
Yeah.
It affects stormwater drainage, and so an article in the newsletter, I was thinking, specific mailing to the watershed, and certainly incorporating any of this that can be in a watershed permit would be helpful.
Peter?
No, I just couldn't hear John at first, but then his volume got better.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I like the idea of getting this out to pool owners. I think it's terrific that Gene was able to, you know, get this. DCR has a number of best practice guides for major watersheds in the state, including like the Quabin, and for pools, for dog walking, dog waste, and I think, you know, our surface watershed, surface water supply in open lake is very similar to those large state reservoirs, and we should take advantage of the best practices that the state has identified, because our water supply is very similar to the statewide ones, and a big part of that is education.
Okay, and, and along those lines, Gene, so these postcards, are these something that we can send out? Do we need some sort of approval for that?
No.
Or is this something we can do and send to residents in the watershed, and then to any kind of known contractors, builders who, who build here in, in town or in the watershed?
Nope. So in the past, we've had two mailings go out for the watershed, again, for educational purposes. I provided those to Dan Beckley, who's on the call, asked him to kind of review them, update them, enhance them, and what he's provided is three different mailers. One is to residences in the watershed, one is to landscapers, and one is to realtors. A little bit different topics for, for the most part, but kind of just why it's important and what we ask of them. And so we can mail these out as, we just wanted some input or your review, and if there's anything you'd like tweaked, we'd be certainly willing to hear that.
Yeah, I think, Gene, it's terrific that you're, you know, thinking who these should go to, and the addition of the realtors and the landscapers, I think is terrific. As you know, we got feedback from residents in the watershed who had spoken with landscapers who were on-site doing work, and who were onsite doing work and asking them what the precautions are in the watershed and hearing that they either didn't know or wouldn't say. And so this came out of that watershed plan update, public outreach to, you know, try to get the word out as to what the rules actually are, all intended to help preserve that drinking water supply at the lowest possible cost to the town.
Great, so then, yeah, let's run. These look great. I like the three different ones and who they're addressed to, and something that can be reused to, you know, do it, do it, and, you know, in the spring before, kind of like, you know, people start going out and start doing things, and maybe then in the, in the fall or in the, before the winter.
Yep.
Fantastic.
Okay.
So let's do that.
And lastly...
Jean?
Yep.
Did you also have a map with the road crossings for signs? I, I didn't find that. What map were you referring to?
Okay, so that's next.
Okay.
Let me just find it. So Peter had brought up street crossings-
Yeah.
...for the watershed, and we know that there's roughly 36, I forget, 36 to 39 street crossings. And again, Dan really investigated this, although there are that many crossings. We talked about kind of narrowing down, if we're going to go with signage, and as I said, I'd have to present this to the town manager, and whether it goes to the Board of Selectment, I'm not sure, but the, we wanted to get your feedback first. So what we talked about is potentially narrowing that down a bit to 10 key entry points. Hold on one second, I'm just trying to cast this, hold on. So Dan, if you want to chime in, I'd be happy to hear you. So we have a map that describes recommended street signs, recommended trailhead signage, and trails themselves. So Dan?
Yep, so can everyone hear me?
We can.
Great. Yeah, so a lot of the street crossings are either dead-end residential roads or only a small part of the road crossed into the watershed, and so we wanted to focus on areas that are higher traffic and areas where if people are driving down that road, they are going to continue to stay in the watershed. So we have Bradford Street, 133 heading towards Great Pond Road, coming from Boxford, 133 on Great Pond Road, coming from 125, another one on 125, another one on Great Pond Road, two on Salem, Dale, and I think that's Winter Street and Essex Street as it enters the town. And so those are some of the major traffic corridors. And then looking at trails, there were, you know, some that enter the watershed, and we kind of figured having that information at the trailhead made more sense, you could post it at the kiosk or something like that, so that especially on Wire Hill, you have tons of trail crossings because they just kind of interconnect, and so if you just catch everybody at the base of the hill, we figured that would be a better, a better place for that information.
So we whittle down roughly 36 to 10 potential signs.
Where's the one on Winter Street?
Sorry.
South, southeast corner. Maybe that's not Winter.
Is it here?
Do you know, on the crossroad? I'm just thinking...
Jean, the other point that came up in addition to identifying which crossings, and I do agree, we don't need all 36, they're, some of them are quite small. But the other thing we identified is signs that are eligible to drivers passing by in cars, and that gets to the size of the sign and the wording.
Yep, so we have some samples in a second, I'm just trying to identify the Winter Street. Aton, I think it's this one right out here.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Do we know it?
This is Dale Street?
This is one on the right, this is right.
Right here. Can you see my cursor?
Yeah, it's where, it's where Winter Street comes into the watershed.
Yep, same town.
I'm seeing it there, I'm just trying to figure out which is the cross street.
So Winter Street actually dead-ends into Great Pond Road, it doesn't come all the way through here-
Right.
-where this large wetland is.
Okay. I see, okay, I know what you're talking about now, okay.
All right, so to Peter's point, we talked about types of signage, and here's some examples that we researched. And then we have, Dan has drafted some proposed signage, but this is the type of signage we found. I'm just going to scroll through kind of quickly, but... And then admittedly, neither Dan nor I are graphic designers by any means, and we would certainly solicit some input from a sign company, but here's Dan's initial thoughts. Oops, sorry.
And I will say that I think as it got switched from PowerPoint to Google Slides, the proportions got thrown off, so some of the wording looks covered up, but I think you guys get the general idea. Yeah, like that one.
Right, and that one, but you get it.
So those are like less informational street signs that are more so notifying people, and for trail signs, we included a bit more information.
And the last piece was the trail signage, so, again, just conceptual... And we would envision putting these at trailheads, so on Osgood Street, up near the new fire station, the Stevens Street trustees parking lot, and the parking lot adjacent to Stevens Pond.
So for the street ones, I mean, I agree that I don't think you want to overload it with information, people driving by, how much are they going to see? I mean, I like something like that, I think it gets the point, but I think it would be good to have at least maybe a line just saying, you know, there are, something about that there are certain either activities or items you can't use and a phone number to call, you know, just if you have questions, if it's possible to do that without overloading it.
Okay.
You know, something along the lines of, you know, you know, chemical restrictions or restriction in place, call, you know, dot, dot, dot.
For more information.
Right, for more information.
You know, I was thinking along those lines initially, Aton, but now that I see the sample signs that Dan has done, I actually, I'm less inclined to put more info on because I just think it gets too busy from a moving car. Can you go back to the road signs?
The proposed or the samples?
The proposed.
That's nice.
Yeah, that's nice.
Hmm.
Keep going. I mean, personally, I kind of like that one.
Yeah, that's the one I like the best, too.
That one?
Uh, no, the sec, uh, that one.
Keep it clean?
Yeah.
What's the one after that, Jean?
So the difference is keep it clean versus drinking water supply at the bottom.
I'm not loving the imagery with the kayak there.
Our town seal.
Oh, is that what it is?
Can you go to the next one?
I didn't realize it was a town seal.
For the most part, it's the town seal.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So Peter, there's only four, I'll flip through them again. Lake Atchikwick Water, protect our drinking water, keep it clean.
Go back, go back once again, so, this is not my favorite one, but the two things I like about this is the word entering the Lake Atchikwick watershed and protect our drinking water. Those are the two reasons to put the signs up, entering and not just protect, but protect drinking water. So if you go to the next one, I really like this one the most, but it's not a message of welcome to, it's entering instead of welcome to, and if we could change that, and at the bottom, you know, I like the wording on the first one, keep our drinking water clean. So I'd be interested in using this one, but adapting those two key messages from the first one here.
Okay.
And if we...
I would agree with Peter. I think keeping it some, I like what you came up with, Peter, and I think keeping it simple is key, because if someone honestly is going to pay attention, keeping the drinking water clean is going to get the point across, if they're going to do the right thing. It's an awareness, there you go, you know what to do, you know you shouldn't be doing particular acts if you're someone who's doing chemicals and things like that.
Right. Maybe, but I mean, I don't know, I feel like if you put something along the lines of restrictions in place, maybe somebody would think twice about, you know, hey, am I doing, is what I'm doing allowed, is what I'm doing not allowed? Again, I don't know.
We can split either side rather than the bottom and include restrictions in place and...
Let's, yeah, maybe we can just see it and just see what it looks like. I mean, again, anything is, we're improving the situation, so, but yeah, let's see it and kind of how Peter describes, just with the kind of the combination of these two. Let's see if we can put something in just that says that, and if we don't, as a board, kind of like it, then we'll just get rid of it. I just like to see it because I think that kind of hammers home the message of, hey, you really have to be careful with what you're doing. But it's a great, this is a great, this is a great start. Jean, can you find out what would be required, who we would need to, I mean, should we? It may be good just to present this to the Board of Selectment, and maybe this just goes to the town manager, but maybe they have some other ideas, too, you know?
Okay.
Can you go back to the trail signs?
Is there any CPA money for something like this? Does it fit in? I can't think of a category squarely fits an open space.
No, I mean, if we're doing the signs for the CPA projects with our administrative body, which is just those two, Jean?
But this is a CPA project, which is, so...
Oh, but could it be something like that? I mean, it's probably not enough money to warrant it, but...
This color scheme is consistent with the trustees' reservations.
Because it's...
Say that again?
We can't hear you. We can't hear John.
Okay. So this color scheme is consistent with the trustees' signage within Wire Hill?
Yeah.
And that's the last one.
I really like modeling that, that one on the trustees', and it's got the guidance, it's somebody walking, so there, it's easy to read, and it shows them the whole picture. I really like this one for, for the reasons you mentioned, Jean, I think we should go with this. What does the white block in the corner of the map say? It's a little hard to read it online.
The red, it just shows a key. The red line means watershed boundary, and the yellow dash line, or the yellow solid line is trails.
Gotcha, thank you. Can you go to the one before this? Just, just to point out, I like this one the least.
Okay.
It's just not a very trail-friendly sign.
Okay, great. I think that is great work, and I think hopefully we have good guidance now, and let's see if we can move to the next steps.
So Dan is the creative planner.
Great job, Dan.
I'll give that.
Okay, all right, so why don't we now go to Royal Crest Estates? Anything else to do before we jump in that? Nope. Okay, Royal Crest Estates, proposed master redevelopment plan for the property, detailed information related to the revised program presented at the January 18, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. So we'll hear from the applicant, go through their kind of entire presentation, then I think we'll do, if there are any public comments that have come in, and then we'll do questions and comments from the board, okay? After all of that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for, once again, setting aside time in your agenda to allow us to present further...
I'm sorry, it's very, we can't hear you, sorry.
Does this help? Is that better?
That's better.
This is better, okay. All right. Thank you for having us, and again, at the last meeting, we shared with you that over the holidays, we spent quite a bit of time trying to assemble all the various comments and questions and issues that people had raised about our initial plans, and we were trying to reconcile all of that and try to put it together in a way that responded to many of these, and the last meeting, we were able to give you an overview, a schematic of where that process had brought us to date. And at that last meeting, we also hope to be able to come back tonight, expressed a desire to come back tonight to actually give you more detail, to flesh some of that thinking out, and also to answer specific questions that were raised at that, at that meeting. So tonight, we're going to turn it back over to John Martin from Alkus in Manfredi, and Mike Lozano is going to follow him with a kind of a summation of where we were and where we are now. Again, thank you for having us, and I'm going to turn it over to John.
Thank you, Jim. Members of the planning board, it's good to be back together with you tonight. We're going to take you through a comprehensive presentation for your benefit and others online, starting with the site, and then as we previewed last time, we've divided the site into four different districts that have very distinct characteristics, and I'll take you through each of those and hopefully at the end, have a comprehensive summary of our proposal. Michael will fill in a lot of the specific planning information, and this first part will focus on the character of the place that we hope to create.
So just in the packet, this is, am I correct, that this is 22 underscore 0201 underscore town meeting underscore draft underscore v8 dot PDF?
Yes.
Is that what we're looking at?
That's correct.
All right, so anyone who's looking at home and wants to look ahead, or that's the document we're looking at, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we begin with an existing conditions array of photos of the frontage of the Royal Crest Estates, 87 acres, fronting onto Rune 114, and there are six photos here that are keyed at the bottom from where they're taken, but in general, they're very consistent with the Royal Crest Apartments in the background, set back from the road about 54 feet at its closest point, and they're largely screened by a veil of mature trees, some deciduous and some evergreen.
When were these photos taken?
Last week. Two weeks, yeah, a week and a half ago, after our last appearance before you.
Thank you.
It was one of the requests of this board.
It was, and that's why I just wanted to confirm.
So they're very recent. We're showing the plan of the existing conditions, just to talk a little bit about a history that you know well. You know that North Andover was settled from the earliest days of English settlement, largely as an agrarian community, and for really two centuries was primarily agricultural land. It was only in the mid 1800s that it began to become a center of manufacturing, and that persisted until the 1940s and 50s, when with the advent of the interstate system, it became increasingly attractive as a bedroom community, still with a large manufacturing presence, a high-tech manufacturing presence at the time, but a very appealing suburban community for people to live in. And I think a lot of the principles that informed the interstate planning system were used to inform the 1960s development of Royal Crest. You see some clover leaves and off-ramps. and off-ramps. I'm being facetious a little bit, but this is a plan clearly created by an emphasis on vehicular movement, not pedestrian movement. And I think we all agree that in its current state, it lacks a sense of pedestrian cohesion. It lacks the connections that make for good, tightly knit communities. And if you contrast the plan there with the plan of the adjacent neighborhoods with largely single-family homes facing streets, it looks a little bit out of place. So we came forward all through last year, culminating in August, with a plan that provided a more rational street grid and created multifamily housing and townhome housing that faced the street and created a real emphasis, not on vehicular movement, but on pedestrian connections and a really vibrant public realm. And this plan, we talked about with, in a lot of meetings with you, and we opened our minds and opened our ears and we listened to a lot of the constructive feedback. And the plan and the images that we're going to show you tonight are a result of us assimilating that critique and trying to improve upon this plan. If you look in the bottom right-hand corner, I don't know if you can see the cursor, my hand, but our previous August 2021 iteration had a series of multifamily buildings, an office building here on the right, and then four multifamily housing buildings, all set back 35 feet from the property line. And they were punctuated in the middle with two parking garages. They were set back a little bit further, but the blocks were very uniform and very regular.
And this is just for everyone, this is page six of the presentation.
Yes. And then, just other areas, the focus of the plan was the town green. And to the left were about 1,000 beds of student housing with a leg that protrudes, again, a uniform 35 feet from Route 114. And in the back were townhomes that were arrayed, again, facing streets with back alleys to allow access to garages and parking underneath them, on the on-ground level, but underneath the townhome, and side yards. So they came in clusters of two and three. And so the plan that we're presenting to you tonight is a variation on that. If I toggle back and forth, you can see how, especially along Route 114, we have set the buildings back further. Most of the buildings now are set back at least 70 feet, some more than 70 feet, and one less than 70 feet. But that's all intentional. It's done to preserve that mature tree screen that you see out there today. As I said, the existing buildings come within 54 feet of the property line. And by setting our buildings now back 70 feet, we're able to preserve a lot of the specimen trees that form that buffer and create that screen. So from day one, we think that characteristic of the site will be preserved. But in addition to moving the buildings back, we've also made them less regular. As you can see, the block sizes are now different and the arrangement of the buildings, some of them have their short ends facing 114, others have their long faces. And the whole plan is loosened up from the plan that was presented back in August. If we look over at the Merrimack College housing, the long leg that protruded out towards 114 has now been pushed back. And all throughout this zone against 114, in August of 2021, some of the buildings, a good number of the buildings, reached five stories in height. And today, the plan that we're presenting to you, which you will see perspective sketches of in a moment, the buildings are uniformly four stories or three stories, four, three stories. And so they're lower and they're more irregular and they're further back from Route 114. We've also taken a different conceptual approach to the town green itself, made it more organic, loosened it up, and made it more of a natural landscape. The housing units remain the same. Michael will go through the numbers in a minute, but the 40B component, the market rate component, the townhome component, all remain essentially the same. The student housing component has gone down from 1,000 beds or 250 units to about 824 beds or 206 apartments. And so there is some reduction in the student housing count, but the multifamily and 40B housing remains consistent. So we took a floor off and you'll see in a moment that we preserved the amount of open space. We actually increased open space a little bit. So where did that extra volume go? It went back here in what we call the C block, where my hand is now. And these legs got a little bit longer and we actually used them to collect what was little pockets of green space in those side yard green spaces. And now we've put that together in a more unified mall or like a large linear park. I call it a mall, like Commonwealth Avenue Mall, but not that urban. It's more suburban. It's a long linear green space that spans two blocks and is anchored by the clubhouse, which is the center of this townhome community.
What's the difference between the purple and the green?
Just the planting types. Sorry, I hit the mic. It's a landscape gesture indicating that that's a specialized area, whether it might have some hardscape, it might have some ornamental planting in it. You can see the purple zones are along the back buffer in the town square and a little bit in the village green. I should also say, while we're talking about the buffers, we, as we pushed everything back from Route 114, we maintained the buffers to the north and to the west and even to the east. We did not decrease any of those buffers. And when we talk, when we talk about the open space and the tree plan, the trees that you see in dark green around the buffer edge are all existing trees that will remain in place, undisturbed areas as we abut the neighbors. But the clusters of dark green trees along 114 and intermittently back here on the village green and intermittently in the courtyard of the student community, those are all existing mature trees that will be retained. And as you can see in the note, there are over 100 of these mature trees around Route 114 that we're able to preserve, whereas our previous plan was only able to preserve 36. And in addition, we will be planting over 800 new trees along the streets, in the courtyards and throughout the parks and buffer areas. So the light green trees you see are all new trees and the dark green trees are all mature trees that remain. As I mentioned, one of the key critiques that we listened to was that the architecture and the space was too uniform, that it was too large and it needed to have different areas. So we've broken the project in four districts, each of which have their historical roots in the town of North Andover and are very appropriate typologies for building in the town. I'll take you through each one of them, but starting on the far right, we have what we call the Mill District, which is the first block, which is the one commercial building that we have is in that district. And we have four or five residential buildings in there. All of those buildings will draw their architecture from historic New England mill architecture. The town center, in the center, the center two blocks, which include the town common or the town green, those are drawing their architecture from colonial neo-Georgian architecture, red brick, sloped roofs, some clavard, some wood, but mostly red brick. And then the campus district is obviously, education was always a priority in this part of the New England and continues to be today. Merrimack College founded in the mid 40s after the vets returned home from World War II and playing a vital role in the community to today. And that student housing district will be designed around those courtyards and quadrangles and take on a very historic New England collegiate architecture. And then the largest land area is the New England Village, which is characterized by the long green common and some multifamily housing, the two in the C block, but predominantly the three-story townhomes, all wood frame, kind of a saltbox architecture. So what is the architectural character of these districts? The Mill District, here's an enlarged plan of where it was in August, with the two buildings flanking a parking garage and the office building all coming within 35 feet of 114 or the property line at 114. And here's the plan today with the buildings set back. The office building has gotten shorter. We've rotated some of the buildings. We've put the short end of this building here at the main entrance, so it presents itself as a thin or smaller building. We've let the long building here screen the parking garage. We've moved the parking garage off of the 114 frontage, so you can't see even through the trees, the parking garage. And we've kept the medium-length L of this C-shaped building facing 114. All of those are set back 70 feet from 114. And they draw their architecture from the strong mill building typology right here in North Andover, but also throughout New England, which is characterized by framed buildings comprised of red brick, often arched windows. The windows are oversized. As we all know, these buildings make ideal residential conversions into loft-type apartments. And we think there is a market demand for that type of product. So looking at the proposed buildings from the edge of 114, you see the walking trail that meanders through the 70-foot setback. You see some mature trees retained and some new trees planted. There's understory planting of ornamental shrubs and grasses. And so it makes that same kind of characteristic that those opening photos showed of a veiled building that's set far back from the road. Just to give you a little bit clearer view of the proposed architecture and to maybe make it a little bit more seasonal, we've rendered each of these views in the winter as well, when the trees don't have their leaves. And so you can see that it's a four-story building, a brick frame, large, oversized loft-type windows, punctuated by a belfry, a corner little bell tower, which again, was an element that we pulled from a lot of these historic mill buildings. There's one shown in light brick, one shown in darker brick. The color of the brick could vary, but the architecture is very historically rooted in that mill language. When we moved to the town center, this was the August 21, August 2021 plan. Again, two identical buildings with the garage in the middle, town green on the left. And when we look at it today, we have created a U-shaped building that opens its courtyard to the south to 114, again, presenting the very thin ends to the street. And then the one building that we allow to violate our 70-foot setback is the building that frames the eastern edge of the town green. We do that to allow us to mark that primary corner there. This is the primary entrance. This is where the traffic light signalized intersection would be. And it is where we would want to put a tall clock tower on the corner to make an iconic entry statement. We would also want to have small footprint retailers along the frontage there to activate that edge, to activate the town green. Our previous, our previous plan had a small footprint grocer there. We do understand that people in the community want that small footprint grocer. We think it's a vital part of the mix to activate the town square. So we have retained it, but we've pushed it back here to the corner of Main Street. And by doing that, because that grocer needs immediate proximity to parking, we've been able to remove the parking deck from this block that fronts onto 114 and push it back across Main Street to where it is still contiguous with the grocer. The grocer still anchors the corner, the diagonal of the town green and has proximate parking. Think that's a much better solution. In terms of the architecture, we draw the architecture from historic New England town centers. The town green is anchored by a signature hotel. And whether you're in Newport or Hanover or even Andover, there's this really strong history of signature hotels anchoring town squares. And as I mentioned, again, it's a colonial neo-Georgian architecture with red brick walls, largely punched windows here as opposed to a framed building, sloping roofs, sometimes articulated with dormers, and some wood frame construction as well. You get wood clavards mixed in with the brick. The bases of these buildings are articulated for retail and active uses. And that would be similar in the architecture of, that we propose around the town green. I'm going to show you two images of the town green. This is the building that forms the eastern side that has the clock tower on the corner. It's the one building that comes within about 40 feet of the right-of-way line for Route 114. And it, that tower becomes the iconic vertical marker of the corner. You see the green, the town green in summer, again, with the mature trees remaining, some new trees planted. And in the winter, when the leaves fall off, you can see through to the architecture of the building. Again, four stories, this time with a sloped roof with punched windows, this time articulated with shutters and retail stores at the base of the building. If I take you across the town green to the northern edge of the town green, this is the four-story hotel that we propose, again, drawing its architecture very much from those hotels you saw in our precedent slide. And in the winter, showing the main entry to the hotel at the corner of these two streets with small footprint retailers and envisioning an outdoor deck that doesn't, wouldn't get much use in the winter, but obviously in the summer, it's south-facing, it overlooks the green. And that would become kind of the anchor or the center of the whole composition. Moving third to the campus district, it was previously two five-story bars that fronted the western side of the town green, giving way to four-story bars as we moved toward the neighborhood. They frame a U-shaped courtyard and then an enclosed courtyard. And they were five-story stepping down to four. They were 47 feet back from the property line. In addition to pushing that 47-foot dimension back 100 more feet, so now it's 147 feet from the property line, we have lowered the height of these two buildings. So now all of the buildings are four stories. We retain the open courtyard facing west and the enclosed courtyard on the northern half of the site. In terms of their architecture, we go right back to the earliest educational buildings in New England at Harvard, at Yale, and threw one in from my home state of North Carolina. But again, very consistent in their architecture, three and four stories, articulated roofs, express chimneys on the end caps and largely red brick pallet. So standing on the town green and looking west, you see the sloped roofs and the four-story edge presenting itself to the town green with the short end facing 114. And in the winter, with the leaves off of the trees, it would present itself more like this. These, this architecture is designed to complement and further the architecture of the other two buildings that form the walls of the town green. And then finally, going back to the village, to the northwest corner, this was the plan that we showed you in August, with its clusters of three, two and three townhomes separated by side yards, alleys in the back to allow cars to come in and park behind, and a clubhouse. But. and park behind, and a clubhouse, but little small pieces of of green space. And you can see how we've taken those small triangles of green space and consolidated them into the long linear mall. The clubhouse remains. The townhouses fill in and become more attached and draw their inspiration from New England wood frame architecture, saltbox architecture characterized by small low-slope roof front porches, pitched roofs that present their gable end to the street sometimes and sometimes put their gable end parallel to the street and made of shingles, clabbards, sometimes vibrantly colored, sometimes left naturally to weather. And so this is a view taken from the center of that long town green with the four-story multifamily housing building here on the right and the attached townhomes forming the edge to the north of the of the mall or the common here. And in the winter, when the leaves are off the tree, you can see how the four-story multifamily building steps down as we move to the north and approach our, the green buffer and our neighbors to the north, three stories with gable ends fronting the street, small front porches that make it a very walkable and inviting street, as well as the green spaces, which is aggregated, which makes it more useful for the residents. So that's a quick tour around the architectural and spatial character of the project.
Thanks, John. So I'll do a quick, if you could pull up the other presentation.
Sure.
So I'll do a quick summary of the changes from the last plan that you've seen in August and subsequent to that to our current plan and how we've specifically responded to the things that we've heard from this board, from neighbors, from some of the hundreds of people that we've talked about. So as you can see, we've been hard at work, really being responsive.
Which one are we looking at? What's the name of the presentation, please?
It's called twenty-two underscore zero-two-zero-one underscore tech prez underscore V three.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a little bit more technical. I also want to respond specifically to the questions that you, the board members, asked two weeks ago. So I'm going to go through that, and we're going to, you know, go through, again, a summary of the changes and respond directly to those questions. So as was previously discussed, we have significantly increased the setback on Route one fourteen. It's at, now it's at least seventy feet from the property line, approximately eighty-five feet from the roadway, the only exception being the signature building at the town green, which is a little bit closer to the road as a placemaking gesture. And this is what we're going to go over. So at the last board meeting, there was a specific request that we provide superimposed plans, so that's what's in your packet here. They're a little bit complicated, but if you do have a PDF and you can zoom in, you can see the existing buildings in light gray. You can see our original plan. You can see the plan from August, and you can see the current plan. So there's a series of these plans that show all of those overlaid over each other. The previous presentation has some more details, so if you toggle back and forth, you can begin to see how the, how the setbacks have changed. But you can see, you know, again, that we've been very responsive to the setback question. And this has the, you kind of have to zoom in or else have extremely good eyesight, but this has the actual dimensions on them as it relates to one fourteen.
Was, was the, when we did the walkthrough, it felt to me that the dorm was really like the closest and kind of most impactful on one fourteen. Was that actually the closest building?
It, I think it was the closest building at that time.
Yeah, that, yeah, originally, it was like twenty-five feet.
Yes.
And now that one's at like, so you changed that one from like a T to making it an L now, and now it's like a hundred and forty feet back, is that right?
Yes, yes, that's exactly correct. So you can see in red, so we actually moved it once before, but it was a modest move, and now we've made a much more dramatic move to be as responsive as we can to that sort of critical point that we had heard from the board and from others. So now we're, now we're approximately a hundred and sixty-two feet from the edge of the road.
And the, but the setback to the street neighborhood hasn't changed, correct?
That's correct, that's correct. So around the remainder of the site, around the perimeter of the site, the setbacks have all remained at least as as large as they were in the last plan, if not in some cases, a little bit bigger. And in almost all cases, the setback is actually larger than exists today. Go back to full screen. All right, so we also have detailed building height information, which we have included. Summarize, all of the buildings are now, as John mentioned, all of the buildings are now a maximum of four stories and are a mixture of four and three stories. The vast majority of the buildings, as we are proposing, are a maximum of fifty-five feet. There's a few buildings, all clustered around the town green, that are slightly taller to provide distinctive architecturally appropriate roof lines and elements as you, as you saw in the perspective renderings. They have elements like clock tower and chimneys, really to create a place, you know, create a memorable place. While these buildings are still only four stories with the height of the top of the occupied floor space at forty-nine feet, they're slightly taller than other buildings on the site because of a couple of reasons. Because they have retail on the ground floor and retail demands that you have a higher floor to ceiling height than regular residential, so that adds about five feet. And there's also space for structural trusses and mechanical systems within the roof structure. So you can see, we have a section through one of the buildings that sort of show what is going on with these buildings. Please keep in mind, as you kind of are considering this, the existing zoning code in town does not include, and this is verbatim, chimneys, spires, or mechanical equipment or penthouses used for enclosure of mechanical equipment in the calculation of building height. So just want you to keep that in mind if you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So let, so I'm looking at page, oh, let's see what page it is. Can't tell which page, the, the one with the chart and the, and the heights.
Yes, yes.
Yes, this page. So, I mean, listen, I, I, we'll get, we'll go back to the things that I really like about this, but a question. So student housing, August twenty-twenty-one program, we had buildings of five stories and four stories, five stories, four stories.
Yes.
But we had heights at sixty-six, fifty-five, sixty-six, and fifty-five. Now those are all four stories and sixty-nine feet. So why, if we're going down or staying this, going down in stories or staying the same, why are the buildings taller?
Yeah, it's precisely for the reason that I was just going. So in order to create sort of cohesive architecture, we put pitched roofs on those buildings. So the previous buildings at five stories were flat-roofed. They were more modern. We wanted to create a more contextual, more, more traditional architectural style with the sloped roof. So that is what is driving the ultimate building height. I mean, I'll note that all of those existing trees that were, that we are now retaining are all at a minimum of about eighty feet, and many of them are going above a hundred feet. So even at this height, the existing trees in that area will be significantly taller than this building.
Okay, and I, I mean, I see, inside the hotel, which, and these are set further back.
Yeah.
Is it possible to do those with flat roofs?
It is possible, it is possible.
And would those kind of yield then the more of the fifty-three to fifty-five in that range of heights?
They would, they would. I think it diminishes a little bit, the placemaking, the sort of what we're trying to get to with a place that people really find memorable. But, you know, i- if if ultimate height is a concern, yes, if we went to a flat roof, they could be shorter. But, you know, ultimately, again, because of the, the context with all the existing trees that we will, will be retaining, you know, we think that these are very appropriate and totally will fit in town. If you go back to the other presentation as well, you look at the, the photograph of East Mill, you know, just down the street from here, you know, that, that's essentially the heights that we're talking about.
Okay.
Why did you jump in?
Yep.
So we had tried to balance the flat roof height issue with an articulated roof that there was fairly explicit expressions of interest in seeing us do something more interesting at the top with a little bit more articulation. So it is a balancing act, but in fairness, a flat four-story building is a lot cheaper to build than what we're showing you. And it's really a matter of aesthetics that we're trying to accomplish. But if people are insisting on flat roofs, that, that's not going to be an economic consequence to us.
Okay, no, I just wanted to kind of know what, one, I think it's, you know, it kind of jumps out, at least to me, is, okay, it went down in, down in, in floors, but up in height, so why does that happen? And those are the taller ones. They are set further back, which is good. I'd much prefer to have the taller things kind of in the middle where you have less of a impact, but it's just nice to know what the options would potentially be is if, and if people feel strongly about those being shorter, then we have that option. It's just good to know.
Of course, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanted to be, you know, really responsive to the questions. We know that there are questions about why these buildings are the heights that they are, you know. We're, we're, we're trying to be responsive there.
Okay, thank you.
And again, here's, here's just a, a section as well as an exam, an elevation of a four-story building. So you can see that these would be a maximum of fifty-one, approximately fifty, between fifty and fifty-five feet.
And so that's what we could imagine for a dorm if it's that.
Right, right.
Does a college have any preference?
I think we haven't quite gotten to that point yet, but we're trying to, you know, again, try to balance everybody, everybody's considerations.
Okay.
So open space, we had gotten some questions about open space. We know that that's very, a very sensitive topic. The new plan actually has more open space than the previous plan. And there's approximately one more acre of land space, landscape space on the interior of the site than the previous plan, and that was a question that, John, you had asked last time we were here. So we've actually been able to increase the amount of landscaped space on the interior of the plan, as well as increase the buffer area by, you know, increasing those setbacks as we've talked about. Even with the reduction of the building heights, we were able to do this by adjusting the height on other buildings, as John has mentioned, and reconfiguring the buildings on the site. So we were able to consolidate some of those smaller green spaces that we had into better, more effective ones, and it ultimately allowed us to, to increase the amount of open space.
Are there any playgrounds, ballfields, swimming pools, kind of amenities? So where, where would those?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we have ideas of where they will go. We certainly will have those. Currently, we have provision for a playground in the village area towards the rear of the site. We anticipate that the town green is going to be very active, and there's going to be all sorts of, sort of, active activities in that area.
Active activities, right.
Yes, yes, but, you know, I think we're still listening. We're still listening and trying to find the right fit for, for what the actual programming of these spaces will be. But yes, we expect these spaces to be, to be great amenities for both the people who live here, work here, or visiting here, as well as neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, mostly for, for the people living. I mean, if you're going to have the multifamily housing, I think you definitely need at least one playground, maybe two, depending, you know, smaller or bigger, you know, one for, maybe one for two- to four-year-olds, one for, you know, five to ten-year-olds. And then not necessarily designated ball field, but an open space that can be used for, you know, throwing a ball, throwing a frisbee, whatever, and those things. In addition to just places where you can walk, I think are kind of essential to the, to a project like this.
Yeah, we agree. And that's where, you know, we've, we try to create a, a good mix of sort of passive open space and active open space, as well as, you know, more specific to some of the buildings and more amenities versus public open space. I think we've got a good mix right now, but yes, we're, we're totally with you as far as providing those sorts of public amenities. We've included an updated parking table, so we've, again, we've gone in very extensive detail to show the parking for the entire site. As previously discussed, we actually have significantly more parking on the site than is required under the existing zoning in a couple of different sections in the aggregate. So we did provide an updated parking analysis here. As previously presented, we introduced the district concept for a more neighborhood feel. I know that there was a question whether we could update the video that we had previously shown. We are still working on that. That is something that is a lot of work, but something we're absolutely willing to do and something that we can update. It just will take a lot more time. But we did want to give you the best images that we could to sort of give you the feel and the idea of what this is going to look like. And then lastly, we have updated the program summary to reflect the reduced program. Again, we reduced the student housing by a hundred and seventy-six beds. We reduced the townhouses by one, and we reduced the office building by a little over fifteen thousand square feet. And again, this is in addition to the more substantial reduction that we had done over the summer of last year. And I want to note that even as we have significantly decreased the proposed program, we've maintained the size of the forty B component, so we can deliver all the benefits to the town that come with that piece of this specific project, including and especially the affordable units. So those are all preserved within this. Even though we reduced the, the program, we, we kept that the same. And again, you know, it's, that's, that comes at some economic cost, but we know that that's important. So we will pause there, and again, we're available for questions as they, as they arise.
Okay. Why don't we do, I'm going to read, there, I think that there were two of butter comments that came in previous, have any come in during the meeting? If you want, would you check, Gene, please?
Yep, none of that.
And I'll read the ones that have come in. Then if anyone's here that wants to make comments, we'll take those, and then we'll do questions and comments from the board. That'll be our order, okay? All right, first one from Earl Cook, Earl Cook, January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. Good afternoon, Gene. Meredith and I met with Greg Lane on Monday. Can someone just share for everyone watching who Greg Lane is?
Greg Lane is part of our team. He does and manages our community outreach.
Okay, thank you. Meredith and I met with Greg Lane on Monday, where we discussed the latest revisions that were presented to the town. We also discussed what we thought the final buildings of the project should look like and their exterior features. For well over a year, I have met with Greg on a pretty regular basis, and I've shared with him what I thought the scope of the project should be and what some of the design elements should be so that it fits aesthetically with North Andover's character. I've given him samples of design features, including the mills in North Andover and some of the historic architecture in Salem, Mass., and other historic Massachusetts towns. From my conversations with Greg, it would appear that a lot of these suggestions have been taken into account and will be incorporated in the final designs. I can't wait to see what the next designs look like and how the overall district building designs mesh together to form one cohesive project. From what I have seen so far, it appears that Greg has passed along the information that we have discussed and that the design plans have made significant steps in realizing some of those changes. I must say that I was particularly happy that some of the buffer zones and setbacks have been made larger and that more of the mature trees and greenery, greenery will be kept in place. I again mentioned the security issue where some students walk through neighbors' yards and the privacy issues where tenants from Royal Crest can see in neighboring yards and houses. Greg told me that Aimco is committing, committed to installing fencing, a wall, or other barrier structure that would stretch pretty much from Route one fourteen to almost the end of the property on the other end. They are try, still trying to figure out what kind of barrier that would be. Overall, as far as this part of the project progresses, they have done a pretty good job of incorporating changes that the residents and neighbors have asked for. Before the latest revision, I was more than a little put off that all the buildings fronting Run One fourteen were so close to the road and some were eighty feet high. After the latest revisions, I like that there is no building higher than four stories higher now. I feel that the increased setback in keeping existing trees in place will make the project fit much better into the existing area, giving the feel that it has been there for a while. I also like that they have redesigned some of the buildings and added more green space in the front of the project. By doing so, they also moved the garages so that they are visible from the road. As much as I like most of what they have done, I still have serious reservations about Merrimack College being granted ownership of any part of this new project. I would have far less reservations about their involvement if they had a lease agreement but no ownership stake. I completely understand why Aimco wants them to be included, but it irks me nonetheless. It is no secret that the bordering neighborhoods of Merrimack College do not consider them to be good neighbors. On top of that, to my knowledge, Merrimack College is not engaged in any way or contribute in any tangible way that would make them part of our community. Greg and I have talked multiple times about the involvement that I feel Aimco and Merrimack College should have with the community as a whole. I have even made suggestions that help them, that help them to become involved. It is my firm belief that Merrimack could and should become instrumental in aiding the students of North Andover. I feel that Merrimack College could offer scholarships to North Andover students, especially those who would not normally be able to afford a high-quality college education. The way I see it, they could offer a male and female STEM scholarship and a male and female non-STEM scholarship. In the scheme of things, these are relatively inexpensive items for them to offer since no housing or food would be needed. One of the other suggestions that I offered to Greg was that Merrimack College sponsors some of the various STEM programs in our some of the various STEM programs in our town. My son was involved in robotics for his Lego League and Minecraft, these programs can be costly for town to sponsor, especially since the equipment and fees can be very expensive. From attending past events, a lot of the best teams are actually sponsored by companies outside the normal academic circles. Without giving me any specifics, Greg told me that the town and Merrimack College are in talks to have some of our wish list items addressed. It's hard not knowing what that list entails, but since Merrimack College is yet, is in the education business, I would hope that they would step up and support our students in some meaningful way. I've also stressed to Greg that I feel that Aimco should also be more involved in the community as a whole. As I said earlier, I think Aimco has come a long way in listening to our community, incorporating things that we feel we need in order to feel good about the project, that being said, approval of this project is a big ask for our town, I feel that Aimco and Merrimack College needs to prove that they want to be part of our community and not just take up space. I look forward to my future dealings with Greg and to see what new changes they make before presenting a finalized plan. Sincerely, Earl Cook, eighty-two Berkeley Road. Second one, also from Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, this is from Serena Pence Savoy, six seventy-one Johnson Street, says, hi, I just attended the Zoom seminar and would like to please submit the following feedback. One, the state's Route one fourteen renovation project was scoped and designed for the current Royal Crest density, not the new proposed density. Two, there is no reason to have a hotel in this development, all the hotels on River Road in Andover have extremely high vacancy rates, encourage prostitution, drug dealing, and the like. We do not need this in the middle of this new development. Three, North Andover currently has how many thousand square feet of vacant open spa, office space? Why would we need more office space in town? I know they think people who live there will want to work there, but we are seeing people working from home in droves. This space may be yet better used for additional senior and retail residents, which could give the town steadier tax revenue than unoccupied commercial space. Can you please look at the adequacy of the parking assumptions in the development? I understand that it's in accordance with the town's current zoning, but that is pretty inadequate for such a dense development. If the parking is inadequate, people will be parking illegally within the development and slash on Route one fourteen, or simply not going to the shops and restaurants inside the development, and please look at the parking allocated to the student housing, it should be at least one car per student with additional spaces for allocated guests. I think this version is much improved from the last versions, version of versions, but still has some items that need to be addressed before we can be sure that it will be a long-term constructive addition to the town. Thank you very much, Serena Pence Savoy, six seventy-one Johnson Street. Again, I'm reading the public comments, not necessarily vouching for any particular positions in them, but we appreciate Earl and Serena for your comments. Any additional abutter comments? Anyone here have anything that they would like to add at this time? Okay, if you do before the end of the meeting, just raise your hand, okay? Let's go to board questions or comments, we'll start with our remote friends, so Kelly and/or Peter, any questions or comments? Kelly, can you hear me, why don't you go first if you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any additional comments, I'm working on understanding with the height, that the floors to the height and kind of understanding that impact and the visuals that are there, I think with the additional, maybe with the additional video, I'll have a better appreciation for the change, but I don't know yet, so I don't really have any comments, but that's what I'm thinking right now.
Okay, Peter?
Thanks, Aiden, but no.
Okay, thank you, Peter, John, anything else?
Yeah, I have one question, when you showed the...
John, can't really hear you, John.
Okay, yeah, when you showed the, the housing units of three stories, and I forget what you called that section, New England Village or whatever, I, I was curious about what the two large buildings, which are the two large apartment, I think it's where the bulk of the forty B and the commercial rate rental is, what they look like, do they look like, because I don't think they'll look like that, you know, you're not going to make them wood, I assume they're, they're more the brick, but I can't tell, like, it feels like it's a little bit of both.
One more time, you're seeing the, the end of it right here, and I think what...
Aiden, having a hard time hearing the response.
So you're seeing the end of that four-story multifamily building here in this rendering, and in terms of its, its architecture, we, we do think that all of the village housing is probably wood frame, and, and our precedents, probably the best precedence was the large residence at Salem, this guy right here, yeah, more of that kind of architecture for the multifamily houses.
Okay, so you, you're still with the wood concept?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just, since we were talking about the height, just I'll kind of flip back to some of the other images, just so people can, can take a look at sort of some of the thinking we had when we were thinking about the height and how it would be appropriate. Again, here you can see what we've taken as, as mill sort of architecture, very, very typical for this part of Massachusetts, but you can see the image on the, on the upper left there is right here in town, it's just down the street here, and you can see that that's, you know, in some ways over four stories, it's got a somewhat occupied roof, there are elements that are a little bit higher, and you can see that's approximately the type of height that we're talking about at, at most in some of the taller buildings.
Going back to the townhouses again, you talked about variety, but if you have long rows, don't you basically have to do the same thing? I mean, are they all going to be front gabled or not? I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense, because two hundred's a lot of units.
It is, and I think what all of these perspective sketches are designed to do is give you a sense of the character of the place, none of them are finalized designs, I think this image on the top left is a typical kind of development that we're envisioning, in this particular case, all of the gables do face the road, and the, they're, they are attached in a long row, but that's not necessarily the case, the final design could have a roof more like this, where for a certain length, maybe they turn, and the slope of the roof faces the street, and because the third story is occupied, there would be dormers on top of this, but it's largely the character that you see in these four images, is what we intend.
Yeah, I, well, everything in the back, I'm still struggling a little bit with two hundred units, it's not clear to me what really they're going to look like, that's an awful lot of units, and the only one of those four that you've shown there that looks at all remotely like what it would actually look like is the first one, the upper left, I, I can't see the other three, because those are all single-family houses, whereas the one on the left is, is, is a townhouse, so I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how that's going to scale, because it's one thing to have it for six, seven, eight, ten houses, but this is two hundred, it's a lot.
Yes, it is two hundred, but it's on close to thirty acres.
Right.
And just, we chose these images, this probably is indeed a single-family house, this is two houses attached, this is two houses attached, two apartments, two doors there, so, you know, this is most typical of what we've drawn, and we also would point out that the two hundred is a maximum, it's, you know, it's what we're seeking to have permitted, the final design may have less, but it won't have more, could have up to that.
Yeah, and I'll point out that there's approximately two hundred units that exist there today, and in many cases are closer to the abutting neighborhood and the property line, so we think, we think this is going to be a big improvement.
Well, the townhouses, I mean, the townhouses generally, I don't think you see from, it's more, it's more internal, right.
Again, the one thing about the existing buildings is each building has only got twelve units, so it ends, but, and I understand what you've done, and it's not directly made to be a critique, but the fact is that in your new setup, you have a long row of probably, you know, twenty, I'm guessing, or maybe even more in a row, so that, that viewscape is, what is it, oh, you've broken them up a little bit.
Yeah, the longest, longest run is seven.
The point is, being is, yeah, it is, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so there's like thirty of them, you know, on the street.
But there, are there, there are little streets in between, or...
Yeah, these, these streets are real streets, that's about a forty or fifty-foot right-of-way, these are short blocks, these typically are twenty-five feet or so, and they're seven houses plus a little side yard, so two-hundred-foot blocks, very walkable, very intimately scaled.
Okay, Melissa, or John, anything else, is there?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
So I'm going to go opposite of John toward the forefront, because I guess, for me, from, you know, not being an architect, from just a layman, I still see there's like a lot of brick, but we have brick with big windows, bricks with, little, brick with little windows, brick with shutters, brick with trimneys, so I guess I'm curious to see, you know, what's the video, like, how that's going to look different, and still not just a whole lot of brick buildings along one fourteen, from a layman's perspective rather than an architectural eye, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Does that mean, is there going to be variation in like brick color?
Well, that's, that's certainly an easy place to go, we did try to vary the brick color in these two buildings here, in this, this rendering that you're seeing, with a lighter kind of beige brick on the right and a, a red brick on the left, and I think, you know, a lot of these historic mills not only had brick, but a lot of them had stone, and so there are many buildings in this district, only four or five, and perhaps at the end of the day, one or two of them are different than brick, they're made of cast stone, or they're a mixture of a cast stone and brick, and certainly we can color the, we can vary the color and texture and size even of the bricks.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm with Kelly too, I think once I see, you know, a, a video rendering of the heights with the different variations and, and get a better feel for it, I, I appreciate that.
And I, I think we were trying to convey here too, the, the size of the setback now, and this is, you know, you are going to see glimpses of the buildings, but these are not new trees that are going to take twenty years to grow, these are existing trees that are going to be preserved, with new trees, there's going to be some new trees, some undergrowth that's going to be planted there, some new landscaping, you will see the buildings, but they're going to be pretty obscured by the trees that exist there today, which we think will look really nice, we think the architecture will be really complimentary of, of the woods essentially.
Yeah, and, and I will add, I do appreciate the, the work that you guys have put into this to, to meet our, our questions and concerns from last meeting, so, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
The numbers definitely help, right, so I'm looking at the chart again, so just, I mean, we talked a good amount about those buildings on one fourteen, then we see them going from, you know, D two from seventy-nine to sixty-nine and fifty-nine, F two from seventy-nine to fifty-three, then H stays at fifty-six, I mean, other than the one you talked about with the clock tower, which I think is sixty-nine, and which came down from seventy-seven, they all are lower, which I think the numbers really help, and the pictures help, but I think, you know, you're definitely hearing from board members that really the video visual would be helpful, so I think at some point during the public hearing process, I think that's going to be helpful for everyone, so pictures are great, I think a, a video would kind of help kind of close off these kind of what does it look like questions, but I think it's, I really do appreciate how you've tried to take different things that different board members and different people in the community, like going back to Mr. Cook's comments, and all these different comments, some of which contradict each other, right? We don't want it to all look the same, we want it to look like North Andover, sometimes that can be difficult, but I think what you've tried to do is take different pieces of North Andover and put them all together in one place, and say, okay, yes, now we have some mills that look like North Andover, we have some educational parts that look like North Andover, we have some single-family houses that look like, you know, kind of row houses, we don't really have that, but you're taking at least part of an element of something and putting it together and saying, okay, now we have all this, and now can we make it into, to kind of use Mr. Cook's words, one cohesive unit? And I think it, to me, I think it's getting there, but I think that's, you know, that's the task that you've set out to do, and I think this is a significant improvement from where we started, and I think that the public hearing process will help refine it, and if we can really see some visuals, then I think ultimately there'll be a great project to be able to present and say, okay, we've done all we could, now town, do you like it or you don't like it, and let's vote on it, but I think it's really getting into its final form. Parking numbers, I think, I want to look at them a little more closely, talk with Jean about them, but they look pretty good in terms of, you know, units per space and, and how you've gone about, they look thoughtful in terms of how many units per space and what kind of, you know, residential versus the retail versus things like that, so, and comparing them to other zoning that we currently have, so I think that's also been helpful, and I, again, I, I echo Alyssa's comment, that I think you really responded to all the questions that we asked, and gave us the overlaid maps and things like that. There are going to be more questions that come up through the public hearing process, that's a great part about the public hearing process, so, you know, this is certainly not an end, there's still a lot to do, but I think we're pretty far along in the process now, so I, I think that's a good thing. That's it for me, Jean, what comes next?
Public hearing, it opens at the next meeting, I think we have a pretty comprehensive draft bylaw, we still have placeholders in for the dimensional requirements, the setbacks, the parking regulations, as you know, they're still being discussed, so eventually those have to be kind of formalized and put in the bylaw itself.
So what we'll do is, we're going to start the public hearing at the next meeting, it's going to be open to really any questions or comments that any public members, board members have about anything, if there's a question or comment that we can't answer or that the applicant can't answer at that time, then that's why we have multiple public hearings, so we can address them in the future. I think the things that I've heard, I think really video is, as of now, the only thing that I've heard that we'd still really like to see, like, was there anything else that we asked for that wasn't able to be provided for this meeting? I can't think of anything, but...
No, I think we, we, we tried to create a comprehensive list, I think we covered everything, that, that one just needs more time.
Okay, um, yeah, I think, so I think that's about, that's about it, if anybody else comes up with anything that they, they want to see or that I forgot to ask, just let Jean know and she can pass that along, but otherwise, let's plan to start the public hearings, so we will do those, we will do those both in person and remotely, if you want to have a remote question, get, try to get it in beforehand, that just helps people answer it ahead of time, you don't have to, but if it comes in ahead of time, people can actually, you're a lot more likely to get a good factual response. If there are a lot of people that want to come and you want to let us know that you're coming, you don't have to, but if you do, then we can just make sure that we have the right space, if there's going to be a lot of people, we can try a different space, it hasn't seemed like it, most meetings have had one, two, three, maybe tops five, you know, non-members of the applicant's team, but if people do plan to come and they want to let us know that, then we'll comparatively look at adjusting our location, but for now, it'll be at Town Hall, and the date is...
February fifteenth.
February fifteenth. Okay, so we'll continue this till February fifteenth, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from January eighteenth?
Okay, so there's a revised minute in the package, so when you motion, please motion for the revised version.
Get a motion to approve the minutes as revised.
So will.
Motion made?
Second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Hi.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Am I about yes? Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So will.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, and all in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Uh, Peter?
Hi.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Yes.
John? I vote yes. Very good.